The following program is sponsored by The Greek, Ely's Radio Shack Dealer at 570 Altman in downtown Ely, and brought to you as a public service by Georgetown Media in Ely, Nevada. Ely City Council Meeting, June 9th, 2022.
which it stands, one nation, under God, in the principle of liberty and justice for all.
Name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen. Lord, we thank you for the blessings we receive for this day, and we ask that you send your Spirit upon this council, guide them in wisdom and prudence. May they center their discussions on the common good, preference for the poor and elderly, and the wise use of our public resources. May all those who are intended here offer input and do so with charity and truth, and may the deliberations of this chamber be fruitful and pleasing to you. We ask this all from our Lord Jesus Christ in unity with the Father, and the Holy Son, God forever and ever. Amen.
Mayor Robertson?
Present.
Councilman Langus?
Present.
Councilman Carson is absent tonight. Councilman Spear?
Here.
Councilman Alworth?
Present.
Councilman Williams Harper?
Present.
City Clerk Lee?
Here.
City Attorney Kukoo?
Here.
Public Works Supervisor Crickcraft?
Here.
City Municipal Judge Mike Foster?
He is on by Zoom.
And City Building Official Craig Peterson?
Here.
And that's all.
Okay. Thank you. For public comment, I'd like to note that if you're here to speak in favor or against the pump storage project that was commented during public comment, if you will have questions during the presentation, we will take those during the item, but if you'd like to speak for or against that, that'll be done in public comment either right now or at the end of the meeting, so please keep that in mind. So with that, we move on to item two. Please state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes, and we'll open public comment.
Good afternoon, Mayor Robertson, City Council members. My name is Mark Jacoby, Director of Frontier Operations for the Boys and Girls Club of Trucking Meadows, and I'm here to inform you that I'll be here this evening for a few questions at my residence when we discuss the item of the donation, $200,000 to the renovation of the Murray Street School for the Early Learning Center on new business. So really, I know this program that we're developing is going to serve seventy kids ages five weeks to five years old, so I know it's very important to the community, and it's one of the rooms available to answer the questions during that time.
Thank you.
For the record, my name is Mary Kerr, and I am here to speak on public comment on new business, item B4, and encourage your support of the Boys and Girls Club of Trucking Meadows Early Learning Center. They've been a huge impact in our community over the past five years, which you guys are all aware of. The need for childcare for working families, we're desperate for that, especially for that age group and that market. I think we're fortunate to have a partnership with the Boys and Girls Club of Trucking Meadows, the legacy and trust we have with the club and that brand internationally speaks volumes, so I would encourage the maximum support that this is possible to be able to allocate. Thank you.
My name is John Gerchellis, and I wanted to speak in the mords to the White Pine Pump Storage Project. I have some figures that I worked up in regards to that. If you're speaking at forty-one hundred acre feet of water, I want you to know exactly what that equates to eight gallons, and this is what comes out of the aquifer. It breaks down to one billion, three hundred and eighteen million, nine hundred thousand, three hundred gallons of water out of the aquifer. Now, as far as restoration due to evaporation, maximum problem is seven hundred and fifty acre feet per year. That equates to every year, two hundred and forty-one millions, two hundred and sixty-two thousand, two hundred and fifty gallons per year have to be replaced. I'm just putting this out there as just a point so that you can understand the impact that it will have on the environment here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Adam Young, Superintendent of the School District for the Record. Nice to see you all tonight. I'm here to speak in favor of item B4 as well, and just want to acknowledge the formal partnership that exists between the White Pine County School District and the Boys and Girls Club of Trucking Meadows. The Boys and Girls Club came into our school districts five-ish years ago and has been just an outstanding partner. We host their club in all of our schools except for one, provide them space, they provide services for our students, summer programming, after-school learning, before-school lunch, you name it, they provide it. They've been, again, outstanding partners for us to be able to improve what we do with servicing students. Item B4 addresses several needs in the community, one of which is early childcare. You're aware that that's a huge gaping hole for employers. It's a huge gaping hole for us as an employer as we work to hire, recruit, and retain teachers. I think the partnership also addresses an item that I know this council and Mayor Robertson are aware of, which is finding tenants for some of our unoccupied buildings. The school district does own the Murray Street property. We intend to lease that long-term to the Boys and Girls Club, but we don't occupy that building, and I think that putting a tenant in that building right in the middle of one of our neighborhoods in rural county would be a really positive thing for this city area as well. So I would like to urge you to support this particular item for those reasons, and again, just vouch for the excellent humans and corporation of the Boys and Girls Club is they're one of the world's.
Any other public comment?
We have several email comments. My name is Aaliyah Jacobson. I've lived in Ely, Nevada for nineteen years. I have five siblings, and it was extremely hard growing up for my parents to find childcare, especially for the younger ones. The Early Learning Center would be extremely beneficial for not only for the people in need, but also for the parents who work or who are wanting to start work. With that being said, I think the Early Learning Center is an amazing idea and can help many families seeking childcare assistance. Dear Mayor Robertson and City Council, please know that it is imperative for Ely and White Pine County to support the proposed Boys and Girls Club of Trucking Meadows Early Learning Center. Safe childcare that can support our major employer and their workers is a necessary service that we have been lacking. The Boys and Girls Club has proven how much we need safe, reliable, and professional childcare in our community. I implore you to join me in your full support of this vital service for our community. I would ask that you also help contribute your time and resources to get this center open as soon as possible. Ely is a wonderful community and has many caring and proactive people. Please let us all work together for this school in much-needed opportunity. With my thanks of your support, Pratchett Norvich. My name is Austin Merritt, and I have lived in Ely for six years. Growing up with my little sister, didn't have childcare over the summer, and I think this would be a great opportunity to help kids who need it. I feel like an Early Learning Center would be a great thing to add to Ely, and it would help out a lot with our early education. Hello, my name is Tiana Brewster, and I have been living in Ely, Nevada for fifteen years. I feel like having an Early Learning Center would be a great thing for this town and community. Growing up, my family didn't have any access to childcare, so it was hard on my family and others as well. With that being said, I feel like an Early Learning Center would help benefit those families that are in need. My name is Melanie Watson. Not only do I currently work for the Boys and Girls Club in White Pine County, I'm also a single mother of two boys. As a resident of Ely, Nevada for thirty-one years, not once have I seen the need for early childcare be fulfilled. Magic Carpet and the Little People Head Start only serve members of a certain demographic, which then in turn can deter some parents and guardians of the community from being able to receive support and assistance with childcare. I have the privilege of having parents who are willing and able to help support my childcare needs. Not everyone is as fortunate as I am. The Early Learning Center would be one of the biggest benefits that White Pine County has had in a long time. Thank you for your time, Melanie Watson. To whom it may concern, I am an employee of the Ely Shoshone Tribe and a citizen of White Pine County. I am supporting the childcare center for the Boys and Girls Club. Please take consideration that I get calls for daycare assistance almost daily. The tribe did have a daycare center on Pine Street until it closed, but people still call asking for sitters, and Ely does not have one. During the school year, the Magic Carpet and Little People Head Start is open, but during the summer, they are not open. So it'd be great if parents can depend on a facility that will always be open. My name is Debbie Walker, and my email address is: "Thank you for your time," sent from...
I have two letters. We read it in the record. First is from Ryan Woolbridge. My name is Ryan Woolbridge, and I've lived in Ely for seventeen years. For the past two and a half years, I've had the privilege of working with the Boys and Girls Club of Trucking Meadows and White Pine County School District. Since my first date at Boys and Girls Club, I have been asked the question, at what age can my child attend the organization? The answer to that is five years old. This would benefit parents with younger children who cannot find childcare. This would not only help the parents of the school district and the children themselves. We all know that it's never too early to be exposed to education. Some of the most widely cited benefits of preschool include increased vocabulary and other pre-literacy skills, as well as the development of pre-math skills like counting, sorting, and recognizing patterns. This would also open more job opportunities in White Pine County, especially for those who want to work in early education and childhood development. City Council members, White Pine County is a unique area in the Great Basin. The county is blessed with many scenic wonders and an enormous number of natural resources. These resources are too numerous to mention. The residents of White Pine County and its governing bodies have a great deal of responsibility to guarantee the resources are both developed and protected at the same time. The community and the people of the entire county must ensure that the county does not suffer exploitation of its resources for no benefit or economic gain. With this in mind, I would like to address the council and the proponents of the proposed White Pine County Storage Project. This project seems to have moved the different channels of our governing bodies under the radar, so to speak. The water rights for this project were run by the county. This means all residents of the county have ownership of these water rights. This proposal will pump large volume of water from our aquifer to supply power to be sent out of our county and out of Nevada. Water in the state is one of the most precious commodities we have. This project will pump and store large amounts of water in reservoirs that will allow this water to evaporate and be lost in saturation. The fact that we are in the worst drought in a twelve-hundred-year period leaves an enormous doubt whether this project is beneficial to the residents. It is certainly not beneficial to the water reserves stored in the basin. As White Pine County looks for growth and economic revenue, I am concerned that this project has not been challenged or studied fully for short or long-term impacts. I ask that the Bureau of Land Management, Forest Services, State of Nevada, and other appropriate agencies thoroughly study and evaluate this project. Only after the appropriate agencies have thoroughly examined and evaluated this project and have released their findings to the public, this project should be put on the ballot for White Pine County residents to decide. Sincerely, Glenn Taylor, Taylor Western Resources.
Any other public comment?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, on your agenda item 8B6, you're considering agreement with each volunteer fire department, which would be a fifty percent increase to what they receive now. The city has been more diligent to the fire department. A ten to twenty percent increase should be considered in step. I remind you, the city has yet to give those four, three business, four, three, four businesses owned by the local women a dime from the American Rescue Fund. Mr. Mayor, on Monday 30th, 2022, I was having a casual conversation with a person regarding the city-county issues, when he asked me what my concern was with his property, which is located out in the county and not the city. I had switched his property, he was talking about it, and he mentioned that I filed a complaint. I asked, is it a city complaint or a county official? The person could not remember any names. I wanted to tell him I had submitted a complaint regarding him. I also cautioned him about NRS 244.368, which states, "City Building Code supersedes less stringent provisions of County Building Code within one mile of bounds of the city." I told him, I didn't make the rules. I only suffered from blatant potential discrimination, and that needs to be addressed, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I would like a copy of any correspondence that was given or sent to Mountain Power in regards to the Murray Street project that does the water sewer. They're having a possibility to relocate their power poles to comply with the ADA requirements. We haven't done that. We're looking at three years now. Mr. Mayor, the current situation of forty-eight students is gone with bad and pathetic. First in the six inches below break, now they have put in new replacement, which is forty-six inches above break. The city is causing the homeowner extreme unrest. City code requires handicap access on corners, and it also ensures proper drainage. This has not been done. Your engineer-servant is the health accountable, the paper, the fiesta, not the homeowner or the taxpayer. Mr. Mayor, I have a candid question to complete this, the properties and individuals that the city has permitted in a lot of the park garages and find the city lots of city...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's for three minutes.
I'll be back, Mr. Mayor. I need some answers.
Is there any other public comments? Hearing and seeing none, we'll move on to item three. Mayor's discussion for possible action, approval of agenda including removal of agenda items. Any motion?
Still move, Mr. Mayor.
Motion from Councilman Alworth. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Langus. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And you vote. Hearing is ordered. Item four, City Department reports. We do have some absences tonight. If the council has any questions they'd like to read in the record regarding any of these items, please let me know. We have the fire chief, super court, police chief, as absent. Municipal Court Judge? Judge Carter, if you could get close to your microphone, we might be able to hear you. Okay. We'll have to get to you at the next meeting. City Attorney?
I have a quick update on the abatement for car number 00109305. I need a vote. An administrative warrant has been signed by the municipal board and given to our public court supervisor for official action. There is a ten-day limit imposed by Nevada state law to have that done, so hopefully that property within the next ten days will be removed.
City Clerk?
I met with Bill Brewer, the executive director of Merle Housing on Tuesday. He informed me that they worked with the hospital to try to get additional housing when they have their contractor here performing that $12 million job on the Bristolcombe Apartments. Unfortunately, the hospital wasn't able to take advantage of it at that time, but they could be a valuable partner for us. I also met with Greg Rivera of CommNet last week, and he informed me the pole inventory is done. I guess I've been assessing the quality of the poles. Mount Willermont wanted to make sure before they were stringing cable that all the poles were worthy, and so that's finished, and the work should start this summer on that. We currently have twelve active complaints, and the clerk's office and treasurer trust will be assisting with the primary election on Tuesday at the convention center.
Questions for the clerk? City Treasurer, City Public Works Supervisor?
An update on RW7, the all the samples passed through the state and then they're back in the line. And the other thing, we have a machine that came up today to the landfill and had to remove the motor out of the gozer. It's only been about six weeks, six, eight weeks to repair that. That's it.
Are we going to get a daily, weekly amount of water consumed at the golf course?
We have been doing that. Do you want...
I'll do it. Okay, I'll do it. Great, thank you.
Thank you. City Water Operator, do you have the report? City Engineers, the absent, City Go-Go Official?
Good afternoon. Received correspondence from the State Farm Office of the RSD and local agreement. I did sign my end of that agreement, so that should be executed. I was given an ETA of about July 1st on that, so we'll be taking over their responsibilities here in the county, doing annuals, doing fire inspections, doing the entire full boat of what the State Farm Office tells us. So, a little bit of progress.
That's exciting.
That's all I have for your report. Any questions?
We have item five, the NRS on page and report.
Good afternoon again. Just briefly, we've been very busy. In the month of May, we've carried 1,844 passengers. That's a thirteen percent increase over 2021, and it's the largest May that we've had in thirty-five years. And I'm really happy to hear that, especially with the price of gasoline. Year-to-date, we've carried 3,156 passengers, and that's a fifteen percent increase over 2021. Since operations began in 1987, we've carried 333,517 passengers. What I added to my report is the economic impact of our visitation, and this data comes from the Travel Nevada Visitor Statistics for Pony Express Territory. And in that report, it says the average night gaming and gaming daily expenditures per overnight visitor is $140. The economic impact for May of 2022, I estimate at $206,528. I figured about eighty percent of our visitors spent the night. So year-to-date, the economic impact is $353,472. The other thing, too, is we did have an issue with locomotive ninety-three. On the engineer's side, the bearing failed and the crude product quickly, and they were able to report that to the shop. The shop has lowered the axle, and we've made all the repairs in-house, and yesterday the shop put the locomotive axle back in place, and we should be able to have that operating in the upcoming week. So I want to commend all of the shop people for being able to handle this repair. They did an excellent job. That's it, unless someone has some questions. All right, thank you.
And the six reports, City Council, Councilwoman Tucker?
Not yet this time.
That's not all.
The only thing I have, Mr. Mayor, is I'll do some research on that property on the Pile Highway, on the east, Cedar Park East. Anyway, that little housing down there, I'll give it to the fire chief. I know it's in the county, but there's no designation of what's out there. There's a, of course, there's a fire, you're going to see fire and smoke if there's a heart attack or something like this. I think I'll give the fire chief, you give the press, more of the county fire chief. We need to identify that area, you know, give it some kind of name with addresses and that, because I see a lot of people moving out there now. It's a hazard, middle of the night trying to find, there's no streetlights out there. If, again, middle of the night, you're going to see a fire, but there's a heart attack or something inside the home, it's not going to be located. So I'll give the fire chief on that. That's the only thing I can do for it.
That's it. Councilman Langus?
Yes, with the Memorial Day weekend, it was not having so kind of a terrible weather. How does the cemetery, it was obvious that the cemetery needed more water, it was late and the weather cold as well, but I could understand that that did not happen. But remarks were being made, and when I look at it, I think something that the city might give of them, one way or another, down below where the baby plots are, and tall, black browse, or whatever is on the end of the fork. It would be nice if we could bring some dirt in and try to fill that in with some grass which some people have left. The poppers plot on one side, and the cemetery on the other, and this in the middle, and it's not really appealing to our community. I think somehow or another, the other expenditures are going to be out, and we could include that over a period of time. Also, the other thing, I've not heard anybody in there mention, but they had a major concert in their day over the weekend. And everybody that had turned the dock, and I understand, talked to a few of them, it was a great success, and it benefited the rebel. Why the rebels did they say remark, they don't need. But I think with things like that, people from out of town, in fact, most of the hotels and hotels were all filled because they came in from out of town toward the concert. And it was a three-day concert, and I guess it was a huge success. I wish I had more facts on it, but that's the best I can do for you right now. Thank you.
Okay. From my report, you do have a list of events that have been approved. I just got back from the league retreat this afternoon, and there was some good information shared and some good networking done. I'd also like to report that our Great Basin Heritage Area Grant for City Hall, which was the $20,000 grant, would get approved, not in the full amount, but in $15,000. They had about $100,000 more than asked than they had in money, so I felt fortunate that we got what we did, and I will be defending our grant to the CCCHP this Tuesday, and that's for the $300,000 for the plan. And I'd also like to congratulate all of our local students who've been promoting, graduating. I've been a part of some of that this week and last, and continuing tomorrow, and it's great to see people getting education and training, and we've had everything from nurses to high school students to eighth graders, and tomorrow will be some people graduating from post that will be going to work at the prison, and it's been great to see, and congratulations to them. We'll move on to item seven. Items for discussion, possible action of the Ely City Council as recommended by the Municipal Utility Board. Item one, Councilman Carson, discussion for possible action, review feasibility of free commercial metal disposal at city landfill with possible direction to city attorney to draft a resolution to that effect.
The utility board have moved this item forward to a future agenda due to Councilman Carson's absence.
Was it?
It was not discussed.
It wasn't discussed. What's the pleasure of the council on this side? Any motion or table from Councilman Williams Harper, second from Councilman Alworth? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item stable. Item two, Councilmember City Clerk, lead, discussion for possible action, approval to remove pass-through landfill fee penalties of the amount of $853 in the eighteenths.
for City Hall, which was the twenty thousand dollar grant, would get approved, not in the full amount, but in fifteen thousand dollars. They had about a hundred thousand dollars more than asked than they had in money, so I felt fortunate that we got what we did. And I will be defending our grant to the CCCHP this Tuesday, and that's for the three hundred thousand dollars for the plan. And I'd also like to congratulate all of our local students who've been promoting, graduating. I've been a part of some of that this week, and I asked, and continue tomorrow. And it's great to see people getting an education and training, and we've had everything from nurses to high school students to eighth graders. And tomorrow will be some people graduating from post that will be going to work at the prison, and it's been great to see, and congratulations to that. We'll move on to item seven, items for discussion, possible action of the Ely City Council as recommended by the Municipal Utility Board. Item one, Councilman Carson, discussion for possible action, review feasibility of free commercial metal disposal at city landfill with possible direction to City Attorney to draft a resolution to that effect.
The utility board have moved this item forward to a future agenda due to the Councilman Carson's absence.
Was it?
It was not discussed.
It wasn't discussed. What's the pleasure of the council on the side? Motion table for Councilman Williams Harper, second for Councilman Alworth. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I have two council members, City Clerk Lee, discussion for possible action, approval to remove pass due landfill fee penalties of the amount of eight hundred and fifty-three dollars and eighty-eight cents from fourteen to seventy-five east, three twenty-three South Street, APN zero...